Call and meeting back to order and Betsy, you call the roll please.
I note that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And the agenda is in your board packet tonight. Any motion to approve that agenda is presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a couple of items from, action items from closed session. I'm sure you've all had a chance to review some, these are closed session minutes. And those minutes are from March 24th, March 26th, March 27th, April 1st, April 3rd, April 9th, and April 15th of 2014. Any motion to approve those minutes as presented in your board packet tonight?
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. Second, please.
I second.
Thank you, Linda. And call roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitehall?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Under Communications, and we have several things here in Carrie.
We have three special children with us today. Do you guys mind, we're starting with, yes, we are with you guys. Do you mind standing up and Mrs. Root? Can you introduce your, and you know, if you don't mind standing kind of over here so we can all see you. Just like you did for the spelling bee, right? We won't make them spell anything.
Well, it is my pleasure to be in front of all of you tonight. We have the county spelling bee that was held in Ponni. Alex Cruz took first place for the eighth grade. Maida Benangala took first place for the seventh grade. And then Neeti Benangala, they are sisters, placed first for the fifth grade. And at the regional bee, they all placed in the top five. That was held in Springfield. And in the end, it was sister versus sister. And we have come to find out that many of us are not as smart as a fifth grader. She did a fantastic job. Neeti ended up taking first place and Maida earned the title of champion. She will travel to the national bee in May. So congratulations.
You have to pose for a picture with Mrs. Root.
And Neeti's principal is here tonight, Melissa Gregory.
Thank you. Thank you, you've made us very proud. You're welcome to stay, but you certainly don't have to. But we're very proud of you. Thank you so much for coming.
Congrats. That's awesome.
It's very exciting.
Next one is GHS Art.
Well, and Mr. Lee, do you mind if we tabled this one? Is she, do you think she'll be able to come for another meeting?
She probably won't come.
She won't come, okay. Go ahead and explain.
She's really. We mention her every month.
Okay. Go ahead then, let's talk about.
But I did want to show you her.
Come on, Lou. Oh, yes.
This is the kind of stuff she gets recognized for. And this one was chosen for the Old Capitol Art Fair. Out of all the entries they had, they selected hers to be for their poster.
Wonderful.
Pretty awesome. I can try to get her, but she's pretty shy.
That's okay. That's okay. I just didn't know if she had a conflict or, so she wasn't able to come. Okay.
Well, if she's so shy, and you can see that, don't press, but if she's gotten her courage up, she's certainly welcome to come next month.
She's a great kid. Nikki's brought her down to my office a few times to talk about everything, but she doesn't say a word.
She doesn't say a word in class either.
Okay, thank you. Next, 5-3 are good news. We talked about this a couple of months ago, I think, or a month ago.
Yes. And I'd actually like Betsy to talk about it.
We are up and running in the app stores. It's an app that is free to parents or anyone to download. You know, this has been months in the make and we are still looking for suggestions. Anybody can call me, text me, email me, any suggestions that will be, that anyone would like to make to improve it, and we'll be making those through the summer and in fact the coming months and years. So, but we think it's a good first start. I've received a lot of positive feedback so far, so.
And it's free. We pay on a per student basis, so as many as possible can download, so even community members can download, even if, you know, they don't have children in our district. And one of, I think one of my favorite parts is not just the information about school district is that Betsy's incorporated community, a community link on there. And so it's a quick link to the village, to the library, the Chamber of Commerce, and those are, you know, we're really trying to collaborate in a really positive way, and this is one way that we can do that. We can also send push notifications from the buildings, and it's just a nice way to communicate as a whole community and get that information out there in one spot. So it's really, I think it's above and beyond, you know, a Ball-Chatham app, it's really a community app. And it's, it's pretty exciting that we can all have all of our information there. So, thanks, Betsy. We're spearheading that.
Thank you, Betsy.
Yep, you're welcome. We have an app for that.
We have an app for that. We do.
We're on the board.
Yes.
Okay. Next, 5-4 is this the time of the evening, it's opportunity for visitors to address the school board considering any agenda topic, anything on the agenda tonight. Anybody wish to address the board? Okay, we'll move right to consent agenda then. Under consent agenda items, 6-1 through 6-17. Is there anybody who wishes to pull anything out for individual consideration?
I'd like to pull 6-13.
6-13 we'll pull out, okay. Anything else? All right, if there isn't, any motion then to approve our consent agenda items, 6-1 through 6-17, except 6-13? Any motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Linda. In a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve.
Call roll.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitehall?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. And 6-13 is our EAV levy report. And Susan, you're on.
I pulled this because I thought it was important that Patrick give just a quick summary of the levies. It comes once a year, it's a reflection of what we voted on. So could you just give, you had a fabulous schedule together, so.
That's the last, the last document.
It's the big one with all the, right, right.
So what this shows in the first column, the non-colored column there, highlighted column, is last year's amount, that's what we received. The top half of that is what we receive in our, mainly our operating budget or what we have control over. The bottom part is the bonds. So that's going to be self-filled by the, you know, whatever we've sold and we have due at that time. So the top part's what we have the control over, what we asked for, but that's what we actually received. And then just moving across the chart, we did the estimate, of course, we, if you remember back to November and December conversations, in order to capture all of the possible new growth and everything, we wanted to ask for a higher levy than we think we're going to get, we knew it was a high number. That represents that number that we ultimately decided on, that's what we submitted to the county. And then that estimated difference is the next column between what we did receive, what we might have received, if we in fact got every bit of that, which was unlikely, but that's what the scenario was. And then the last column there moving over is what we actually received. So that's the number from the county, so totaling the sort of oranges color there, the 25 million, that's the new money that we're getting this coming late spring and then into summer and into early fall, as the taxes are received once a month in payments through the county. First payment should be here around May 16th, and then they go every month after that. So that's what we, that's where it ultimately fell, based on our EAV, new property and everything, and what we asked for, this is what we're eligible for, so.
And we have, the far right col, the far right column is, shows that.
Yeah, the new money, right. So the increase of actual dollars by fund, so about $847,000 and change is new. Again, we're capped, remember, we're in the tax cap, so TPI was only 1.5. So we're limited on the maximum we can get, except for the new growth part, that's, we get a full percent of that. So it's a little bit of new money, but still new money, and not a lot of districts can say that. So again, we're fortunate that we're able to still see growth, so.
I have another, actually, it's a question, I mean, I didn't have, are the questions supposed to come at the beginning, Jim? It's just a question I have.
On this?
On the council payable.
Do we have accounts payable up here?
No, you already approved it, but we can.
Do you know what the party limousine?
The principals can probably.
What are the party limousines? It's about $6,000.
There's, there's alternative transportation that different groups use, that's the name of the company, it's not.
Correct.
Like, where would they go?
One was an athletic. One was an athletic trip, and three trips were Jeff Gamar's groups.
Such as charter buses, not limousines.
Yeah, charter, that's correct.
Oh, they're charter buses.
Yes. That's the name of the company.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not limousines, they're not buses.
So those are athletic events?
Only one was.
Athletic or extracurricular, usually, right?
In this case, they were.
All forward.
Well, three were, three were.
Extracurricular.
In Jeff G, yeah, they were all extracurricular.
So that would be show choir, right?
And one was, one was athletics, and three were.
And they provide the funds for that?
That's correct.
Through our payable.
Through their boosters.
Then they reimburse us for them.
They choose to, especially when they have longer trips.
We used to fund all that and then we pushed some of that cost, we pushed that back to them when we did our budget reductions. Ask them to have their boosters pay for those, if they want a charter buses.
I just, when I see party limousine, I didn't know the nature of the vehicle fleet. Thank you.
It's not in my fleet, I'm sure, so.
We don't have a limousine.
Anything else on the EAV? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any motion then to approve 6-1-3, the consent agenda as presented tonight? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Rick.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Call roll, please.
Yes, Whitehall?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitehall?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. Next on the agenda is old business, construction update, phase one and two. Mr. Murphy?
I'm going to ask Cory Hope, Dave Leonardi, and Mike Zellers to step up and talk about phase one, phase two construction. Dave couldn't be here due to family medical reasons. So Cory, do you lead with phase one?
As far as phase one, we'll get started at GES. We're pretty much wrapping up there, doing, hanging some toilet accessories for Dave. The inside is pretty much done, and it's looking really good. We're still waiting for the smart boards to put up, but other than that, everything is pretty much wrapped up. On the outside, we have had final grade and had some seed put down, so hopefully these rains are going to make some grass grow for us. And we're currently working on the playground equipment. It should be, the end of this week, they should have that done. And then from there, we're going to do the pour and play at the appropriate time, and then put the permanent fence back up. And our trailer is gone, the temporary fence is gone, so it's starting to look finished out there as in a construction site, so. Over at Ball, again, wrapping up there really quick. Inside is pretty much taken care of. The outside, we got, we're replacing a few of the metal fascia panels that just didn't look quite right, and so we're going to finish up the roof there. And then the end of, this week, beginning of next, we're going to start working on cleaning up the site, the site grading, get some seed down. The fence will be gone this week, so again, that'll start looking less like a construction site, finished product. Over at GIS, phase one, having a little delay there due to some manufacturer complications. The inside is being used, it's, it's looking very well, very good, I should say. All the punchline signs have been mostly completed there. The exterior, we still have the construction fence up due to phase two that's going to roll around, so we're going to get that finished. That'll probably stay through the duration of the project. But eventually, we'll get some seed, get some grass seed in. And the manufacturer issue is our metal fascia panels. Having a hard time getting any answers out of the manufacturers. We're still pushing, calling them every day, so hopefully we'll get that resolved really soon. They sent the wrong material that we didn't order, we ordered the right one, they were sent the wrong one. Anyway, it's going to get, we'll get that taken care of and move forward from that. And then GIS phase two, we have started some work on that. We put in the foundations in the fieldhouse area for the two classrooms and the dry storage. And then in the old admin area, we've started demoing a few things. We did some asbestos abatement over Easter break, and, and they're going to start taking down some walls and stuff in there, so. Other than that, that's pretty much the update for phase one, and phase two is far as my vision, so.
Is pour and play, it's a summer project?
We'd like to hold it out as far as the candy, we've got some other issues in the district, we want to kind of incorporate those issues in the pour and play board.
Make one trip rather than.
Sure, absolutely.
Are the bleachers, have any of them been removed at GIS?
Yes, they have, I'm glad you brought that up. Over spring break, we had about three of the, three was, three of the smaller wooden bleachers taken out.
Right.
They were gone in a day and a half, so.
And the rest of them will have to wait till the end of school?
Yeah.
Because you still need.
Seeds.
Anything else? Thanks, Cory. All right. Thank you.
You should all have the same handouts here, I, we might have a little bit different order depending on how Betsy brings them up, but our construction update sheet, the paint shaded sheet, not a lot to report there, we still have some outstanding projects to complete, but we are about almost 94% paid out, and our change orders are still holding down there about the 1.3 or 1.4% work, so we're holding in there. Over through the course of the summer, the rest of these projects, we'll finalize. You know, we've got some roof to finish up at Ball, we've got, of course, the three addition projects. And by the way, Cory reported that all of the additions are, I think GIS we are occupied, we have occupancy on all three of them though. State says that we can move in, it's just a matter of when you want to, so we've got all that paperwork behind us now.
That also means warranties are starting.
Right. That's about, any questions on this sheet? And we'll go on to, Betsy, what do you have next?
Phase two.
Yeah, phase two. We started through, it was requested at a previous meeting that we start looking ahead a little bit, and start looking at phase two and phase three and how they're going to round out. You know, we're working with a bond referendum totaling 35 million. Phase two is going to be less than 15 million, if you go back to that, that page there, we still have some, have some money left over in contingency that we most likely will not be using, probably to the tune of $400,000 to $500,000, that'll be rolled over.
That's on your phase one, right?
On phase one, correct. In phase two, if you look at all these projects, we have bid all of the projects listed on there, and a couple of them you have yet to approve tonight, but we've, we've bid them all so far with the exception of one, which is the high school parking lot, which is right on the verge of being out to bid, and I think we're going to receive bids at the end of next week on that project. We've incorporated all the numbers that we are aware of, that's why we were holding off on this sheet, to try to get it as accurate as we can. But if you look at it, phase two is shaping up to be almost, you know, 9.277. Phase one, I've been thinking in my mind that phase one is 15, phase two is 10, and phase three is 10, so all of them are going to be just slightly under that. If you add them all up together, we are under that 35 million mark right now. Phase three is yet to be determined, there may be some priority issue changes on that, but it's to be determined, so we're not publishing that, you know, right away. So that's really, in a nutshell, and these numbers are, with the exception of, I'm still carrying the estimated cost for the high school line item across there, the rest of them are all actual bid numbers, so that's where we're, where we're sitting on that right now. Any questions on phase two?
I have, I have a few. Thank you very much for putting this together and knowing that phase three numbers are coming as well. I guess my question at hand is, how do we know if items, projects in phase two should really move to phase three without looking at the whole remaining set of possible projects? How do we, how do we know the prioritization? Because I don't see anything that says, okay, we have carpeting at Ball-Ball, but we have a much more important issue where we should switch. I haven't seen anything like that. Do you have something, you know, in your planning documents to that effect?
Well, we have, we have phase three penciled out, but it's not, and it may, it may change with exactly some of the, some of the thoughts that you're talking about right now.
But what you're asking is how we prioritize phase two projects versus phase one and phase three?
Well, phase one was pretty well defined, you know, everybody understood that. But phase two has a lot of smaller projects, and phase three, phase three will have smaller projects I anticipate as well.
Except for the high school.
High school addition will be, be a $7 million.
If I can interject something here, phase two projects are all this summer projects, is that correct?
All this summer, and they're already bid.
So.
But that doesn't mean they're, they need to be done.
Well, a lot of them are approved and awarded.
Okay.
Well, the only way that we can do these, if I can just interrupt for a second, the only way that we can do these kinds of projects is when we're not in session. So if they're not done this year, we would have to wait another whole year to do them.
Correct. There's an interesting fact that I think everybody should be aware of. Now, on this $35 million bond issuance, the laws are that you have five, excuse me, five years from the date of the referendum to just issue your bonds. They don't have to, that money does not have to be spent, they just have to be issued. And I, I frankly feel that, I frankly feel like something comes up, I mean, granted, many of these things were approved, but they were approved as they came up, and this is a very good, very good schedule. My problem is, I don't see part three, and I'm not sure what the rush is, to be honest with you, that's how I feel.
Rush is in regards to, yeah, securing materials and trying to get, trying to get as much of it done as, as early as possible so that you, the construction costs don't go up too.
The way this works, so you understand, is a lot of these, a lot of these projects have to run parallel to one another because majority of them are in the same buildings. Flooring.
Asbestos abatement.
And they're bid separately so that we get the benefit of Mike's construction management to manage a, like an HVAC project, or they bring in a CM for that, we've got one.
Correct.
So the work in, like GIS, it's all interlaced, it has to happen at this time, like the HVAC project, for instance. While we know we got the fifth grade wing that stands kind of low, part of that project is interlaced with the newer work inside, the common's area, for instance.
Correct. Now, here's an example I'll give you. It turns out that, you know, originally, we were just going to replace the GIS roof, but it was in such disrepair, we needed to, we were just going to patch the GIS roof, but it was in such disrepair, we needed to go ahead and go up to a million dollars.
Okay, well, when you think about that, think about.
No, I, I told.
2008 was when we first brought this forward.
Correct.
We said, we were in such disrepair at this time, we need to fix the roof.
Correct.
At that point in time, we had 10% of the current leaks that we currently have.
I'm not objecting at all, Dave, I'm just saying, we have big, I guess my concern is, we do these projects at 50 grand, 75 grand, 150 grand. What if we come to the end and there's a big blow up on the Glenwood High School, and we really don't have the money?
Explain to me what blow up means.
Well, let's just say, something, what's comparable to the Glenwood Intermediate School? What's a comparable possibility?
Okay, if we lose the air conditioner, for instance. We have health by safety funds that would manage that air conditioning project.
Your health by safety funds are committed, aren't they?
Negative. We've committed some funds, but not all funds.
Right. You wait until there's a need.
And that will always.
Could you bring us?
Sure.
Yeah. Could you bring us a schedule of this working document for phase three so that we can see next time? You're working on that already, I know you don't have everything online, but could you bring maybe that?
Yeah, we certainly can, we, matter of fact, we're going to have a meeting that's coming up that.
Yeah, yeah.
That we wanted to talk about some more.
Right, so at the May regular meeting, you can bring us.
Those projects, so if you understand, those are proposed projects, those are things that have come to us late in the, in the game, and people are proposing like chemistry labs and vice versa.
Right.
We need those, we've determined that we now need those. Okay, well, those weren't part of the original $35 million, and that was very equivalent to $330,000 worth of extra work. Those are proposed projects. Now, there's a lot of people vying for proposed, proposed projects, which is why the construction committee meets, and it helps me, helps us to determine what priorities are. Then we'll bring those forward to the board.
So after the May construction committee meeting, then we can bring something like this that we know is a working document, that it would have some of those projects at the May regular meeting.
And we've got to get principal buy-in, administrative buy-in.
Right.
Okay, well then, my question is, you know, you've had some verbal feedback, and maybe some, some of them sound very legitimate to you. Do some of them sound more, you know, more worrisome to you than the Ball carpeting? I mean, I'm, I'm just saying Ball carpeting, because for every verbal request that comes to you, do you think, well, at this point in the game, maybe we should hold off on the Ball carpeting?
Carpeting was part of phase one construction.
Okay.
We pushed it back to phase two because we have mechanical contractors working at this height, dropping things down on the floor, and we didn't want to take a chance of putting carpeting down, mechanical contractors dropping whatever on the floor and tearing the carpet up. So we started to push that out for this year, that's always part of phase one construction.
Am I understanding what you're saying, Ned, is that phase three, you are in the planning stage and discussing it at the construction committee meeting? And all of the other things that people have said that we need, that are coming up, that they would like, are also going to be discussed at the construction committee?
Correct.
And then that information will be brought to us in a, in a concise form that we will then vote on?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Now, there are some projects that have been pushed from phase two to phase three, generators, for instance. Okay, because of the way the money rolled out this year, January, if you remember, the folks came in and said, you've got $6.7 million to spend this year. Well, we didn't know that until January, and we planned on spending the balance of the $35 million this summer and completing all the construction projects, not anticipating the 2015 project listing. So we're, we're trying to balance what we're given with what we've got, and also interlace with what we need to accomplish in GIS, for instance, there's a lot of work going on there that's interlaced, it has to work, it has to work, work has to come parallel. So that's why the listing that you see in front of you is in the fashion, is you have to, Ball, for instance, do they need the carpeting? Yes, they do, that was part of phase one. The carpeting in GIS, this big way, we pushed that out to. Phase three. Phase three, because we don't want mechanical contractors. So that's why the listing that you see in front of you is in the fashion unit. You have to, ball, for instance, do they need the carpeting? Yes, they did. That was part of phase one. The carpeting in, uh, GIS fifth grade wing, we pushed that out to.
Phase three.
Phase three because we don't want mechanical contractors working over carpet layers.
Correct. Okay, I have a couple more questions. I, this is very important and, and I'm sorry if it, it's sort of a tedious question, you know, question and answer portion, and I'm sorry for that. I have a couple observations. One, are you planning to issue, um, new issuance of health life safety bonds within the next three years? Do you see a need?
Audit.
Do you, no. Okay, in the next five years?
We don't know. I mean, it's hard to tell.
Well, actually.
Well, we have, we have a plan for how we spend health life safety monies. We actually have to have projects in hand to, to borrow against. So we've got a plan for that, that'll be addressed at the construction committee meeting. There are things out there that may be addressed five to 10 years up. So roofing at GHS, you've heard me talk, talk to that over and over. Well, in 2015, the roofing roof at GHS comes out of warranty. We will then pick up all the repair costs that are taking place at the high school.
Okay. Well, one of the things about health life safety issuances is that the assumption of the tax per 1,000 does not change. However, I noted in the June 2010, um, issuance of the health life safety bonds, and it's not a reflection, but in fact, the tax ratio went from 59 cents per 1,000 to 70 cents per 1,000. Now, that's in the PMA schedule and you're not responsible for these numbers, but we as a board are.
Is there a question, Susan?
Yeah, there is a question. I wouldn't just automatically assume that you can just issue health life safety bonds within three years because you already have one issue, you already have, and it's not a reflection, PMA did a very nice summary, but if the previous underwriter for the 9.5 million dollars of health life safety bonds did not do, did not accurately propose the increases. Because the key about health life safety issues, issuances, there will be no tax increases.
That's not.
Yes, it is.
In what respect? You talked about the 70 cents.
70 cents is what that is per 1,000.
Right, but that was for, that was for the referendum. Didn't have anything to do with, didn't have anything to do with health life safety.
Correct, but in 2010, one of the underlying, uh, one of the underlying premises of health life safety is that your tax per 1,000 will not increase because if.
How, how does that work? I'm not sure how that works. Where, if you're issuing bonds, how will it not increase?
Good question, but for health life safety, it cannot increase because tax pay or approval is not required.
You know.
So have you, do you.
This is actually a levy question. I think what they're reporting on is, um, could phase one, the agenda item is phase one and two construction. So, so that we can dig these, this information, we can bring that back to you, the levy history of that, that health life safety fund, because I think there's some confusion between the construction referendum, 70 cents and then. But what I'm saying is, this is not the agenda for it because, the agenda topic, because they're reporting on phase one and two.
Correct, but it, it does relate if you are expecting within three years to issue health life safety bonds. And the reason why I say that? Well, it doesn't formally take a vote to issue health life safety bonds, but if those issuances occur within two and a half to three years, then really, the debt is 35 million plus whatever we issue in health life safety.
Can I just say this about that? I believe more than once we've brought to the board's attention that 35 million dollars doesn't cover all of our needs. Okay, we, I think that original number was closer to 47 million.
Correct, and I recall Mike Seller saying, you always have a wish list, just like my house. I, I have a long wish list, of course. I mean, that's just the nature of maintaining.
We do a five-year plan. Five to 10, look out that far.
So, one other question.
Could I, could I comment on that? I think the title of those bonds is very pertinent. It's health, life, and safety for our students in our district. And that is why it can be accessed without a referendum, because that money has been determined to be used for what we need to make sure that our schools are safe.
Exactly right, because how are you gonna forecast that you've got termites in your building and your building's falling down?
Correct, but many of these projects in phase one and two, if we do not have bond referendum money, would otherwise fall in the health life safety bonds, correct? Many of these projects on the safety?
No, they would not. They, they would fall in nickel money if we could afford to do that. There's only $1,000 residing in nickel money right now.
What kind of money?
Nickel levy.
Nickel money? I thought that's what you said.
Part of our regular levy, the top half of that chart, for example, includes health life safety funds, money we can specifically request for, to build that money up, that we are allowed, if we have the approved projects, we're allowed to then spend that money.
And our life safety.
Without having to go for a bond sale, you can build that money up over time and then use it on projects as they're identified.
But those projects also have to be approved by ISBE.
Right, well, it's gotta be approved by the board.
And ISB, so it's not willingly money.
It's the exact same process, whether it's the bond money that filled the bank or you did it through the levy. It's the same money, it's how you got it, but their, the way to spend it is exactly the same.
But at, at every level, there's an approval process. It has to be approved here.
By the board, but also by ISBE.
Correct. ISBE, there's a ROE, and then in between all.
I'd like to request that we, we put this on the agenda for next, because the 70 cents is not the health life safety, that's the nickel levy. It's only, there's a rate, um, in which you can, you can levy up to a nickel. So the 70 cents is actually the bond and interest levy. And so if Patrick can look at some history.
Right.
I think that's, he's looking at me like.
Sure.
So it's some history of our levies in terms of, so we can address that, um, because they were just gonna report on phase one and phase two. But we could do a levy history. We have some, we have plenty of those documents that we can say, this was the levy history and then be able to address it.
That sounds fine.
Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, I got a quick question. You said everything on phase two was bid out except GHS.
Parking lot, correct.
The parking lot.
Parking lot and GHS.
For the actual addition.
That's phase three.
Yeah, the addition, the addition is in phase three.
Phase three, right.
Uh, Steve, I know you're our, you're our board representative on the construction committee. This is a busy time of year for you. If you're not able to make any of those meetings.
I'll let.
Let me know or somebody know, yeah.
Yep, I'll let Dave know then.
Okay, all right. Just wanna make sure there's board representation.
Sure.
This is a busy time for you.
Yeah, there's two of us on there.
I appreciate that.
There's two of us.
I'll keep you informed.
Any other questions on phase one, phase two projects? Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's the update, okay. Well, we have new business.
We'll bring you back up in just a minute, that's okay.
Yeah, new, you're up in new business. Unless you had something else to do for.
Phase one and phase two, and then we'll bring you back up in just a few minutes.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, moving on to instructional, we've got GMS, uh, 2014, 15, summer required work changes.
Yes, uh, thank you for letting me address you on this. After collaborating with our department coordinators, I am making a recommendation and I seek your approval for changes to be made to the wording of summer packets in the GMS course description book. We are asking for, um, the math packets to remain the same for all those students that choose to go into the honors section. The language arts, instead of having the writing portion, we are asking that these students would just be required to read a novel, um, unless they are going against teacher recommendation. And the same would be true for the social studies and science classes. Um, if a student is recommendate, recommend, recommended by the teacher, and please note that when a teacher makes a recommendation for a student to be placed in the honors track, we want to ensure that that student is going to be very successful. And so they take into account the, um, ability of the student and that can be based upon their math scores, which includes, um, their RIT scores, their Lexile scores, their ability to, um, produce the material or to, to have the proper writing skills. Um, they look at the grade that the student has earned because we just want to ensure that the students are appropriately placed in the track. And one thing that has been brought to our attention in the past is that at times, when you have a child that is honors and they tend to have to do a packet for social studies and science and language arts and math, it turns into something that's very overwhelming rather than challenging to the student. Of course, we want to fill curriculum gaps, but if a student is actually recommended for it, we, we truly feel that that student does not have to prove him or herself and that they, they've already have the, um, the background and knowledge to go ahead and move ahead. So I am requesting your approval for this change.
Thank you. I, I read it and I was, I was really pleased to see it, to see the changes. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Anything else? Anything else? Nope?
You're good?
Okay. All right. Thank you. So with that, um.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Yes, cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
White soul.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Musis.
Yes, thank you. Next item is, uh, school discipline handbooks for next year.
Good evening. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and present, as I did last year, for all the schools, um, all the, the middle school, intermediate schools, elementary schools. They're very easy on me because they have no individual changes. Um, we have one change that applies to all handbooks. Um, it's per the, uh, L O I Principal Association Model Handbook. It's the addition of medical marijuana into banned items is the first change. Um, the other two changes are at art building, Golden High School. Um, it's the addition of an offense under sexually explicit or inappropriate pictures or images. Um, we've always dealt with this in the past through other, other offense codes, harassment, things like that. So we're just adding this as an offense in and of itself, so it's a separate thing in Skyward as well. Um, that language comes directly from the IPA handbook as well. It's actually a, uh, language that's already in the middle school handbook, so. Um, the third is some clarification on the hat rule. Uh, we wrote this, we tried this, it didn't work. Uh, we tried to do until the first, first tardy bell rang, we decided to remove that and just make it simple. No hats in the building. So, um, as I said, there's no specific changes or individual changes at any of the other buildings, so that's the only changes that were proposed.
That's it?
That's it.
Light beer, huh?
Yeah.
Well. Uh, any questions?
That's pretty easy.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dave. Uh, we, uh, need a motion then to approve the, uh, the discipline changes, handbook change, handbook changes for next year. Thank you. Who had a second?
Person.
Thank you. Brandon.
Okay.
Lisa and Brandon.
Okay, thank you.
And, and call the roll.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Mike, White soul.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Musis.
Yes. Next is, uh, resolutions for inter-fund loans.
So we did this last spring. Um, this is taking money we already have in the bank in working cash with board approval, um, which is allowed to take that money and transfer it to a fund where it's needed to pay bills. And in this case, the primary, the main account is the Ed Fund and then the secondary amount is going to the IMRF social security account. So it'll move that existing money into those funds, allows us to pay the bills. And then if and when we need it, then we would access the line of credit as the next step, should there be a shortfall. So we're still watching that closely, but this would give us the authority to move the existing money into those funds to make the payments. When tax money comes back in probably around July or August, which would be the same time as last year, then we would repay this loan.
Question?
Um, I have an observation. Would you, um, confirm my numbers that last year we did the same thing and we borrowed 900,000 to the education fund?
Correct.
Correct. This year, we're needing to borrow 1.15 million, which is an increase of 250,000. Does that strike you? What are your observations about that?
It's just, it's just where the money is needed at this point, just that we still have the need in the Ed Fund and the IMRF Fund to, um, that's the primary need.
That's a pretty substantial increase. Would you agree? Carrie?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that, you know, I mean, nobody's gonna remember the numbers, but I am. And drawing on, I mean, it's a substantial increase, so I just wanna make sure everybody's on top of that.
This is a temporary transfer of funds.
Correct.
Correct.
Did we do it in April last year?
Yes.
Correct, but here's the thing. Here's, here's what I'm needing to say. A greater percentage of your tax revenues will be used to pay back this loan.
This is not the line of credit. This is not the tax payments back.
Right.
This is not the line of credit. This is allowing you to use cash you already have in the, in your bank.
Okay.
To make a payment, specifically in the Ed Fund or the IMRF Fund. You already have the cash. This is allowing you to use that temporarily.
From your own.
Until your funds are built back up. This is not the line of credit. This is not anything that, the line of credit or taxes isn't touching. That's a separate access. At this point, this is just simply moving money that you, you already have and have maintained over the last few years to into another fund where it's temporarily needed and then you back it out when you have the money back in that fund sufficiently maintained.
So we should be glad that we sold that land.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yeah. And another observation is that we have more cash at this point in the year than we had last year.[1736.73]